It's a little after nine, we'll go ahead and get this meeting started. We'll stand for the pledge and then Don Mills will lead us to prayer.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, would you thank you for this day and the ability to live in a country where we can make our own decisions through your heart work and trust in each other? We ask that you be with us today and the decisions that are made and all the opinions expressed here. Please take this worship as a prayer.
Thanks, Mark. We'll just head on down through the agenda. First of all, approval of the minutes of the June 12 meeting. Assume y'all got a copy of the email and what you're reading. Very good. Any corrections or additions to the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Do we have any public comment regarding the agenda items this morning? If so, step up to the podium and state your name and address and you've got three minutes. Assume no one can afford, we'll move on to money matters. First up is the Crawfordsville District Public Library Additional Appropriation. Got Larry here?
Hi, I'm Larry Hathaway, Director of the Public Library.
Would you want to step up please? I'm sorry. Just turn that on and they can record it and get the minutes right.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Larry Hathaway, Director of the Public Library here in Crawfordsville. We're coming to you today to ask for an emergency appropriation to replace our HVAC system. We entered into a guaranteed energy savings contract with Performance Services in the hopes that we could lower our energy use. As you may know, the library building opened in 2005 and the method of HVAC chosen was heat pumps. The heat pumps have reached their useful life and beyond. We have been spending many, many thousands of dollars each year to repair them and update them. We had hoped that they would last another year. So, before you... I'm sorry. We have entered into a guaranteed energy savings contract that originally included the lighting and the HVAC. We decided to remove the lighting and pay for that out of our operating fund for this year and we've done that. It's already reduced our energy use. That project is about 90% finished. Performance Services was chosen and according to their specialists, they decided that it would be wiser to move ahead quickly and save the many, many thousands of dollars that we've already spent this summer being extra hot to try to alleviate this problem. We had been saving for this. We have about $850,000 between our Library Improvement Reserve Fund, which is our set aside fund each year that we set aside out of the operating fund. And in addition to that, we have some rainy day fund, about $245,000. So altogether, we have about $850,000. We hired a financial consultant and he's here to help explain the project to you. So rather than go on and on and explain, I just assume if you have questions about the project, I'll be happy to answer the mechanical stuff as best as to my knowledge. Mr. Peters is here to help you understand the financial aspect.
Thank you, Larry. Thanks for the opportunity to be here again. The library engaged us to look at how they could fund this project and their primary goals were not to increase taxes if at all possible and to somehow utilize this cash. We looked at whether we could put that money forward, have a smaller debt payment. But when we look at the amount of the project and what it's going to look like financially for the district after their current lease rental is paid off, which pays off, starts to go down in like 2024 and then pays off in 2025. So that's the original debt on the building that is being paid back by property taxes. One of the things that we did look at the library as well is their ongoing operations, they need certain amounts of cash flow, so they cannot commit all of their cash to this project even across the course of its life, but definitely can't do it in front of the project. The other goal that the board gave us was to not go through the full expense of doing general obligation bond and to try and find a cheaper way to finance it. Indiana statute allows for a unit of government to do what's called a public works loan, which would be under $2 million and under 10 years in amortization. We've got bond counsel here, Jimmy Shanahan from Taft, that can talk to you further about the resolution and stuff before you and that procedure. But under that scenario, it is an actual loan, it's a direct placement with the bank, it cuts down a lot on the professional fees in order to get that issued. And under the funding solution that we put forward was going ahead and doing a 10-year loan under this public works loan statute, paying the first four years from the Library Improvement Reserve Fund, paying a fifth year's payment from the rainy day fund, and then years six through 10, going ahead and imposing a property tax levy because the tax levy for the current lease rental will be going down and going away. So that will achieve their goal of not having a tax increase, they'll just be replacing some of the debt service. In this financing, we're looking at an option to call those loans and pay it off early after they get into the tax levy if they want to try and keep the tax rate approximately where it is because the debt payment on this is a lot less than the debt payment on the current lease rental when they constructed the entire building. But from that, like I say, we've got a funding model for them that allows them not to increase taxes, utilize their cash, get their project done today in order to achieve those energy savings. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on the financing part.
Thanks, Jim. Does anybody have any questions for Jeff on this?
Okay, number one, the tax levy affects who in this county?
This tax levy would be anyone within the taxing district of the library, which is coterminous with the union township, including the city of Crawfordsville.
Only union township?
Correct. Direct tax impact. Obviously, anything we do with taxes affects everybody's circuit breaker in that balance.
I heard you say that this program will be debt retired so that this levy will offset like other taxes that expire.
Yes.
So it's neutral?
Actually, it will be reductions in the tax levy once the original lease rental is paid off.
Local contractors gonna get bid on it?
We've had a bidding already, we have several local contractors in bid, they have like one on the list, the contracts have not been... We have spoken with three local banks and they're very interested in loaning us the money.
What's your timing on this, Larry? When do you have to have a decision?
Decision from you guys, from you folks?
Yeah.
We had hoped to have it today.
Was the 1.43 billion, is that going to be the total cost according to your bids?
Yes.
Just to clarify that a little further, the bids on the contract are a million and four ten. We added $10,000 in for bond counsel and another $10,000 not knowing what we're going to get into for issuance costs. We were engaged to study the project, we're going to help them in a limited capacity structure like a term letter and get effective bids out of the banks. And sometimes in these transactions, the local bank will want a fee to close it, or they may want their own counsel to review the documents and ensure their security as a property tax base.
So if we don't approve that, so what's plan B?
Well, we've looked at several scenarios, this is actually the one that was finally decided on the board. There are other financial options that we can go through. Part of the issue is using the cash to get the project started and scaling it back a little bit perhaps. Regardless, we're going to have to replace the HVAC system. It may take a little bit longer, it may have to be split out, like I said, we may have to scale back, it is a precaution. As you well know, as you may know, electric is all electric, electric rates, when we studied this back in about 2003 in the suburbs of the country, that's changed a little bit, our electric usage is very high. There is going to be some savings off of the lights and the plan was to go to gas heat and more traditional air conditioning with the children. And it just take longer, we'll have to do it regardless.
Any other questions for Larry?
What's the life expectancy of what the new system you're wanting to put in?
Well, 15 to 20 years. And I should say that this was an option that we looked at back in the beginning of the project and as management know, you know, that was a $13 million bond project and they chose the less expensive option, which was the heat pumps. On the mechanical side, you know, refrigerants have changed, all kinds of things have changed, there's considerable labor involved, the equipment itself is not that expensive, comparatively speaking. We don't have to modify the equipment for outside, everything is going to fit there, the gas line is right there already, they put in a new gas line when we did the project back in 2003 and 2004. So in terms of that, the hardest thing is getting the equipment in the elevator up to the mezzanine because we have four air handlers in the mezzanine, some of you probably have that to the mezzanine, Captain Shoby.
So, the 1.4 million, does not take into account the 850,000 that, are you saying that they need that for operating expenses or was it?
They'll need part of that for cash flow, but the part of that 800,000 that they have on hand will make those first five payments.
How long is your contract with the energy saving company? That's what I would...
And we had several companies come and do their due diligence and reports to the library board and Performance Services was the one that the library board chose.
We did this at the courthouse, not at the... But I think we were already actively considering we've got here, they just reported, we were saying it was quite simple. Andy, any other questions?
So, I agree that gas is a way of the near future anyway, as far as what the difference between gas and electric, as you've literally lived in the last five years. Did any of your, how many contractors did you have?
I didn't bring lists, but there were probably 20.
Did anyone propose any kind of solar addition or?
Well, we looked at that initially and one of the, I can't remember the name of the contractor that specializes in that, part of that is a setup where the library is located and putting them on the roof is very expensive, they weigh more than one thing. We have a nice copper roof that will be there for 100 years theoretically. Another option we looked at was putting the solar panels perhaps over the parking lot to provide shade for the parking lot and all that, but just didn't fly. It's a lot more expensive than we think, every sin our case, you know, we're right downtown. The other thing I might add, you know, given we knew this was coming and we've been saving for many years, the opportunity to get the old Parsons buildings presented itself and we used to up many, many thousands of dollars of our savings, we would have had enough to pay for this had we not taken the opportunity to purchase all of that. And like every project we get involved in, we find a oil tank and as the maintenance issues on the ground oil tank, you know, aren't considerable. Luckily, we haven't found any new oil tanks and they haven't found any oil tanks across the street where the new parking lot, pocket park is built, so. You asked me how we might otherwise do this, I suspect that we would have to reduce our operating expenditures and pay for as much as we can over time, perhaps extend the loan period and pay for it as much as we can through the regular operating. Now, that would be in addition to the additional appropriations that we're asking for right now. And then as part of our 2019 budget request, we likely would also have appropriations permissions requested for our additional savings, which again might be the normal lines that rainy day fund and library reserve. We're saving anywhere from $85,000 to $90,000 a year out of our current operating fund. And that does, that percentage changes a little bit, you know, we just heard about the area work portion for 2019 and so we, we've got some limited area work or IDAP on the 2019 budget and that number should be about the same going forward. We've been very fortunate in that.
Any other questions for Larry? I would ask for a motion to approve the council resolution 2012 dash two.
Some vote?
I hear a second.
Second.
Don beat ya. All right. Any other discussion on this? Yes, is it imminent failure at this moment or?
Several of the units have taken offline and we've been robbing Peter to PayPal and doing compressors, we just replaced another compressor. There are 12 heat pumps units and corresponding 12 air handlers. And so, some of the units are in imminent failure. Obviously, it hasn't been as much as cool like the basement, so we've taken...
Andy, all in favor of approving this, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
I suppose we're going to silence one down, two downs. Thanks. Moving on to additional appropriations. So, Ian, Dave, Sharon, Jerry? Thanks, Jim.
Good morning. This is actually a reimbursement for some supplies and equipment that we purchased for the district. It was for the Stop the Bleed program, tourniquets and other things that we're going to be able to have a Stop the Bleed program here in Montgomery County. It's actually district resources, but we have some really good tactical medics that are going to be teaching TCC and TDCC courses, which are tactical medic courses. Maybe you can expand a little bit on that, but it's going to be really good because we're going to have teachers that are going to be able to use tourniquets and all those things that, you know, are on the forefront of preparedness right now. So, that's really all this is, is we paid for it out of our budget and then the healthcare coalition on the district end of things are reimbursing us.
Thank you, Sharon.
You're welcome.
I hear a motion to approve this, briefly.
Something.
Great. Mark, David, Scott, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thanks.
Okay, looks like Mark is up for the next three.
Good morning. Good morning, Greg. I got, yeah, I got three of these. The first is a uniform reimbursement from an employee that resigned for $87.50 and the second two are $60 and $700. A real quick explanation of that with our air card that we have in our vehicles, we have a program called Net Motion that keeps those connected to the network and if you lose connection, it basically pauses it so you don't have to log into the 14 different programs that the computers running. And then as soon as it regains connection, it logs you back in, so you don't have to do that manually. So, we, the sheriff's office contracted that along with the air card through AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T's a reseller of that program. So when years pass, we would have to, every three years, with maintenance contract for the Net Motion would come up, then we would bill the entities that use the program, like carson fire, carson police, us, and town marshals. Now we have probation, EMA, and others that are on the system and our maintenance contract was up, so now AT&amp;T is going to roll that into our monthly bill where we won't have a large expense every three years or however often that expires. So now it's going to be rolled into the bill. Since we had already sent out the AT&amp;T air card bills to all the different agencies out there, I just had to do the same thing, excuse me, asking them for reimbursement for the remainder of this year. And starting in 2019, the cost of the air card has just increased that amount for the maintenance. So, we've already reached out to all those that are on the system, they understand it now, I hope, but this reimbursement is just for the remainder of 2018 because the sheriff's office pays the bill for all entities and they reimburse us. So the $60 is from the towns of Waytown and Linden and the $700 is from the city of Crawfordsville for carson police and fire. And that covers the maintenance for Net Motion for 18.
Moved to approve two, three, and four.
I hear a second.
Second.
Any other, any questions for Mark on this? So your budget tonight, we'll reflect the difference, there are two months.
The reimbursement letters that I send out in 19 will reflect that difference. We, as a sheriff's office, that was already included in our budget, they were just separate, now they're together.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Looks like Beth has a few.
Good morning. The next ones are for my department, numbers five through 22, the separate amounts for those lines. What this is doing is having to move these line items out of the 911 fund, which we're going to have a shortfall in this year based on the budget that was approved for 2018. And we are moving those to the center budget to be paid out of that. The total for all of that is $324,923.8. Now, one note that I do want to make, that is if every penny is spent out of what was approved for the 2018 budget, which generally we've not spent all of that. So, that would be the maximum amount and then also that amount based on the interlocal agreement between the city and county would be split, 50/50.
So how would this total, three, four, it'll be split? And seeing this coming email and talking to the editor about how we might finance this and I came up with some solution, you know, like her, explain all of this to us.
Me?
Here, you are.
Yeah. You have almost $300,000 sitting in Riverboat, so that was my suggestion. We're going to get another $98,000 this September in Riverboat, so you're going to need to contribute an additional $133,728.97 and you have sufficient funding in the Riverboat one. These sheets were set at your seats, it kind of breaks it out for you there.
Yes, and just to look at that, that Jennifer had prepared for that, there was also, if you will remember, a shortfall at the end of 2017. We had to move some lines last year, this is the year that we ran out of surplus funds in the 911 fund. And so there was an amount that was to be split between city and county for last year's amount, which was $15,752.10. The city paid their portion already earlier this year, so based on the amount of these additionals and then adding that amount for the 2017 shortfall is where the $133,728.97 comes from.
So I guess the solution right today would be to go ahead and pay our, take that out of, I guess?
I'll bring you an additional appropriation so you can do that officially at your next meeting.
Okay. So, do we need that on this today?
You need to approve her additional appropriation request today.
And then we'll figure out, will you come in the next week?
Well, I mean, we'll have it figured out and do the appropriation next month, hopefully, assuming that you're okay with using Riverboat.
Okay. So, hearing all those explanations out there, any motion?
I think we had fair warning and knew this was happening and this is just paying the paper now, so I need to approve the additional appropriations for the communication centers number five through 22.
Yeah, you need a second. Any questions or discussions on this?
Okay, I just have one, the one question which doesn't affect this at all, but then next year, when you submit your budget for next year, what do you think the shortfall will be? Be the same amount or even greater?
With, I'm still working on the budget at this time, it will probably be a larger amount. I'm putting in for some additional personnel and so that will up that amount, so.
Now, what is, I missed, what is the actual shortfall, Beth? I missed that.
For?
For this year.
For this year is the $324,923.8.
And Crawfordsville had the same amount, right? Jimmy, you're on that board, aren't you?
It was split 50/50, that amount would be.
That is, the 300... That, that is, the 324,000 is the total.
So it's 600,000?
No. The 324,000 is the total, so it'd be 117,000.
Okay, all right, that's true.
While we have discussed doing this, taking 133,728 out of Riverboat. I mean, we're not, we're not acting on that part of it because that's our intent that are meant to be. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a good discussion. Fix this problem. Is there any movement at the state? Help me out because, you know, we're getting a shortfall and we can't be the only county, city, county program. It's got to be statewide.
It is. There, to my knowledge, there is not a communication center in the state of Indiana that's fully funded by the amounts that come from the statewide 911 board. However, what I'm hearing from the statewide 911 board and legislative people, I don't see that they are going to increase that amount. This past year, the state also took on reimbursing the counties for some required training for the dispatchers. And they're doing that for every center and so they're spending a lot of money towards that. In fact, this year, the figures that I've given you are based on what our guaranteed amount is that comes in to us every year, which is just a little over 439,000. The past few years, we received two bonus distributions each year, somewhere in the area of around 30,000 to 35,000 twice a year. I don't even expect that we're going to get those bonus distributions this year or getting forward. So my figures are based on what that guarantee amount is. The state looks like that the direction that they're going is paying for some training, but I don't see in the foreseeable future that they're going to increase those amounts.
I will just say, the last time the state made adjustments and changes, it wasn't in our favor, by the way. So we want to be careful about what kind of state, what kind of adjustments we want to be made. And that was all based on the previous three years of the amounts. And we actually took a decrease in the amount we were receiving from 911 instead of an increase. So I wish, I wish there was a magic button to push over there to get some help on it, but I don't.
Isn't that all based on landlines?
No, that was all combined several years ago. At one time, the counties had control over their landline fees that came in for 911. When the state took that over a few years ago, it is now one fee per device. So there's no separation anymore based on landlines, cell phones or any other device that can communicate with 911.
Yeah, landlines used to be a set amount, used to be, and cell phones were whatever the state wanted to pay, pay the counties themselves. And now it's all just, what, a dollar per device?
Right, a dollar. They do have it in there that it would take a change to the statute to actually change the amount.